Good evening. I hope everybody's having a good day. We've had a little wind in the last couple of days, but a little bit of different weather. It's good, certainly different. Okay, if we could call today's call to order, so if we can have the powerful city clerk or her deputy clerk call the roll.
Counselor Marujo?
Present.
Counselor Johnson?
Present.
Counselor?
Testing.
Counselor Hildebrand?
Present.
Counselor Oropesa?
Here.
Counselor Halverson?
Here.
Counselor Chapel?
Here.
Counselor Corn? Counselor Arnold?
Present.
Counselor Cabin?
Present.
Counselor Moore? Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll have maybe how about Counselor Marujo, would you do the invocation? And maybe let's see Counselor Chapel do the pledge. Is that agreeable? Body would please rise? Okay. I would remind the body that our last meeting went quite well and we got out at a respectable time. I would remind you that our city clerk had to drive our deputy clerk to Santa Fe to get some training. I think they are both a little weary from all their knowledge that they learned. And so let's try to be succinct in our questions and certainly cover everything that needs to be covered, but I'm sure they're very tired after their long trip from Santa Fe. Okay, we have first thing is approval of the agenda for today's meeting. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The approval of the agenda and the consent agenda, we're moving item seven off of the consent agenda and it'll be after item thirty-one. So I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda. If we can do them both at the same time with?
As amended?
As amended.
So item thirty-one?
Item seven will now go after item thirty-one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that as amended.
Thank you. So we have a motion by council and Hildebrand is seconded by Counselor Cabin to approve the agenda as amended. The only change being moving item seven to item thirty-one. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Orpressa?
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, just really quick. Mayor Protim, on item eleven, if you look?
Oh yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. Also, we need to amend item eleven, which is on the consent agenda for the adoption of resolution twenty-four dash zero-nine approving budget adjustment for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four and consider ratification of resolution twenty-four-ten for the LG Abatement Opioid Fund. It reads twenty-four oh nine, it needs to be changed to twenty-four-ten.
And then on item twenty?
And then on item twenty, it is missing a date. And the date on that is missing in the abstract, when it says board and committee action, the legal committee recommended approval at its January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. That date was missing.
Abstract, so that's back on the item?
Yeah, which is on the consent agenda.
January twenty-eighth?
Twenty-fifth.
Two thousand and?
Twenty-four.
Okay, so now we have a?
Mayor, we've got one more correction, I'm sorry. For the financial consideration on the abstract, it should read a hundred and thirty-five thousand, thirty-six dollars.
Wasn't given that, so, yep.
You're on item?
Same item twenty.
We're still on item twenty, that's correct.
So the overland has, the amount in there is not a hundred and seven thousand, correct?
That is correct, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's base two oh nine.
And now, are there?
Do you want to second it as amended?
Now, we have a motion, an amended motion to pass by Counselor Hildebrand. Does the chair accept the second?
I'll second it as amended, again.
Councilman Orpressa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're going to be approving both the agenda and the consent, I see a lot of individuals here for the skate. I am assuming they're here to talk on item number five. Is that correct? So I would like to pull item number five off of consent and place it on the regular agenda.
Second.
It's my understanding, I believe that all these, the individuals that are here for item five, it's the only one agenda item we have is item five, and they are here, it was my understanding, if there's anybody has any different feelings, they have two individuals that were going to speak for them, they are all here to say thank you for the skate park. I don't believe there's any, is there anyone has any other discussions on item five you want to bring up?
But I think it's still important to pull it off of the consent, allow them to say their piece or whatever.
Yeah, they were gonna, we could, actually, we could go, we have two individuals that would like to speak today. We could go if the body would like, we could move to public participation by unanimous consent and we could go to speak for all items number five and non-agenda items. There are just two individuals who, well, there's a whole bunch for five, but they're all together and one other individual wishes to speak.
And I guess my question to the clerk is, is there anybody else sign up for any other consent agenda item before we take the vote?
It was just item five.
Just item five, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, Councilman, that we go immediately to that order of business, public participation for agenda items and non-agenda items. If you would ask unanimous consent, we could do that, we could probably?
I will do what you just said.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for unanimous consent to move, to go to that order of business, public participation for the purpose of hearing item five and one non-agenda item for Mr. Eric.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any objection? Okay, seeing none, we will be on that order of business, public participation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, for the record, Counselor Moore arrived at six oh eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Okay, so we're on that order of business, public participation. We have item five, we have Tori Hornick and Geneva Martinez to speak on behalf of the skate park and there are? Mr. White, Mr. Brooke, Brooks is a block, Robert Zamora, Molly Jennings and?
Do I start?
Ms. Gonzalez and Chrissy Smith. So we're all here, okay?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hornick and Ms. Martinez.
Okay, so my name is Tori Hornick, I live at fourteen oh four West Eighth Street. I am the main advocate for the UFO skate, we actually just changed it to the UFO Skate Collective because we are in the process of getting our five oh one C to become a nonprofit and everything, but we wanted to thank you guys for taking us seriously and moving forward with this grant, just because it is such a timely matter, because we have to have this design done and turned back in by June twenty twenty-four. And so, you know, it's really good, you know, we just wanted to thank you guys because, you know, we definitely are working really hard at getting more grants to receive more money on this. Like, we're not trying to ask you guys for funds, we're trying to raise our, you know, raise funds through other types of ops or other ways like grants and stuff, but, you know, we're all here and we definitely all would like a new skate park, so we are very grateful and we just wanted to say thank you. And that's all for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Geneva Martinez, thirty-six ninety-one, East Pine Lodge. I also would like to say thank you and also congratulate Juliana and Christina yesterday at the baby box dedication. What a wonderful thing for our community. I wanted to thank everybody. I know a lot of new counselors are on from the beginning, from us starting this project. It is important to realize that we have not asked the city for any funding. We do anticipate really looking at federal, state funding, private foundations, and that is why we are establishing a five oh one C three. We are confident that this could be the hub of New Mexico when it comes to skate parks and bringing in tourists and funding to our city. So I just want to say thank you from everybody standing here, from roller skating, from scootering, to bicycling, to people in wheelchairs. We are wanting to make this skate park an all-inclusive wheel skate park, so we can hold higher events to bring people in. We have the hotels, we have the infrastructure to bring these events on because we do the UFO Festival. So if we are able to bring in the bigger item competitions, which I am certain that we can because of some of the people that are standing here behind me and what they have already done in the skate community. So thank you very much.
Any questions of these individuals?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Are you guys going to be able to get Tony to come in when you guys get this deal done?
Maybe.
Possibly.
All we can do is try.
I would just, I would like to ask that when you work through all these plans, that you keep the whole council involved with what we're doing all the way through this? And my reason for saying that is because I don't want to come up here and have a vote sometime about whether or not we do this and have there be a problem. This item in building something with so many people and so many different groups together, getting them together, let's make sure everybody stays together, so we have no conflicts. And, you know, I've talked, I think Mr. Chapel, he's big at the airport, and I think he's going to figure out how to put an airplane on roller skates, so you guys, we can go ahead and do this when we have these air races.
I do know that moving forward, the next step is to have community input, and we would love to have all of our counselors when that meeting happens, and we will definitely make sure that everyone is invited to that as well. So we're excited about that, and we may be having some pro skaters coming down to assist with that.
My son Zach and Zeph, my two youngest, both do skate park. Zach is real good at that crazy stuff, flips and stuff, so I have to, but so we'd really like to participate. It's really, it'd be a real nice addition to Roswell to have a nice skate park out there and bathrooms and other things. But now, when we get all that, you're going to have to be, you're going to have to help us police it, because as soon as people start tearing up bathrooms, what happens is the bathrooms get locked.
We actually did get the porter potty back a few months ago, and there's only been one wind tipping incident, and since then, we've had it fixed. But it was done by the wind, and that was, but since then, that's, the toilets have been completely, we've been monitoring it, all of us.
I think we'll see a sense of pride from our skate community when we're able to have a quality skate park to skate.
It would be nice, Ms. Martinez, if you'd volunteer to go sit in that every time the wind is forecast over fifty miles an hour.
Yes, sir.
All right, well?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for caring about Roswell and coming, and thank you for expressing your opinions. Thank you. That's true democracy, thank you. Next, on the non-agenda items, we have Mr. Ralph Eric, and he was wanting to speak about the water, water department changes. Identify yourself, please, Mr. Eric and your residents and?
My name's Ralph Eric. I'm a resident here of Roswell, and I own multiple rental properties, commercial, industrial, and residential. And I know that you're considering some changes in the water department. And from talking to Juliana, it sounds like it's heading in the right direction. And I think all of you received one of the letters that I wrote. And it's just that, you know, on our end of it, you know, it's getting really expensive, and it seems like as on my end of it, you know, we're ended up on the hook for the tenants. If they leave the home or the property and there's a balance, that automatically rolls over at this point to the owner of the property, and they will not shut off the water. So I'm pretty well stuck that I'm paying for, you know, city services that I'm not using. I have a vacant property that we're now paying sixty-plus dollars a month on, and I talked to, I went down to the water department, I talked to Ernest, and he told me that that's how things are at this time, that what they're going to do is charge us a minimum, the property is a minimum on vacant properties. And, you know, I don't think that's right. I think you could just shut off the water, you know, and it wouldn't be an issue. And I think, you know, it's not my, you know, duty to make sure that my tenants have paid their bills, and I don't see it was my responsibility to pay their debts. That's where I'm coming from tonight. And, you know, the only other option I have, I talked to Ernest about, was I can pay forty-five dollars and have a meter pulled and forty-five to put it back. But it just seems to me it would be a lot easier and a lot cost-effective just to turn the water off, which I can do myself, but they're telling me that doesn't matter, even if I turn it off, I'm still paying those minimal fees. And I think part of the minimal fee is fifteen thousand gallons of water. So, and then that sewer and trash is involved in that, too. That's why the cost is so high. And I thank you, thank you for your time.
Yes, are there any questions of Mr. Eric? I would, I would just say we tentatively have looked at an option two.
Two.
And that option is, I think it's a lot more favorable to landlords. And so, but I would advise you to go ahead and be here and be in those public hearings when we have them.
Okay.
I would just tell you also about Mr. Eric, there's, one of the problems we have in Roswell is from going to the base, we own the road. The city owns the road, and he had a piece of property, I believe, that was right off the road and it caught on fire, and then the city went and sent, I don't know if they sent you a bill, but to some of them, they might have sent a bill to put the fire out because it was in the county, but, you know, I would hope that we always, if we have a disaster like a fire, I hope our fire trucks, which are a lot closer than volunteer firemen, to be there to put out something when it's that close to Roswell proper. I hope we would do that, but I know that cost him a great deal of money, so.
And I appreciate you, Tim, your, you know, help with the flooding that we had a few years ago. You know, that was pretty rough on everybody out there, because we just don't have the drainage even for the rain that we get today, you know?
The only benefit from that, not having that drainage, is that is in the floodplain, which is one of the, one of our biggest, one of our things that helps us the most in trying to land those Reno air races, is because the floodplain is, about half the racecourse is on the floodplain, and which you really shouldn't build houses on, so. And hopefully, we won't have, as the flood commissioner, we won't have any more drainage problems with, we built that dike up four feet higher and twenty feet wider or something, so.
Does the Corps of Engineers allow you to put in a floodgate there, or is that still?
They have not. They will not allow us to put a floodgate on that big thing. I wish they would.
But that burn being higher?
Burn will be higher.
But hold us, okay. Well, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. Okay, now we're going right back along. If we could go to item two. Okay, Councilman Hildebrand, would you restate your motion so we have it all straight and then? Are we okay with the motion that's there?
Yes.
Okay, then on item two, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Counselor?
I didn't hear you, Counselor, I'm sorry. Yes, we do need to take a roll call vote.
Okay, and seconded by Counselor Cabin, as amended. Is there any further discussion approving the items one and two, the approval of the agenda and the approval of the consent agenda? I believe exactly the way that was structured. Is there any further comments by any members of the council? Anyone? Seeing done, the clerk will call the roll.
And I also want to remind you to use your vote boxes, please. Counselor Marujo? If you'll tell me yes or no?
Yes.
And then use your box as well. Counselor Johnson? Counselor Hildebrand?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay, so that would be for item one and two, would be the way the motion was made, so we are now? Now we are on item seventeen.
Item nineteen, Mayor.
Nineteen, okay. Okay, we have a report from the Airport Advisory Commission, Mr. Bud Kunkel.
I don't know whether it's on or not. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Jennings and Roswell City Councilors. I appreciate the opportunity to update you on some of the more recent Air Center activities. The AAC had our most recent meeting this past Tuesday afternoon. I especially appreciated both Chad and Hess being at the, at the meeting, and I encourage attendance of all of the city counselors when you're able to do that. A new personnel addition to the Air Center is David Skeen. David, would you mind standing up, please? Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Skeen.
David will be responsible for developing and coordinating tenant leases and is responsible for building management at the RAC. One of the first things that needs attention from our Air Center and from the city staff is figuring out what is possible to mitigate the four-hundred percent increase in insurance premium costs. Chad and I have had some initial discussions, but both he and I are certainly open to any and all thoughts to attack this obviously expensive issue that has been thrown at the city just recently. So please, give this issue some very serious thought and what any, whatever any possibilities are to positively impact this issue for the benefit of the Air Center and for the benefit of the tenants at the Air Center. Passenger boardings and aircraft operations have stayed fairly stable over the last six months. Aircraft operations will increase significantly. You've heard the training aircraft flying all around Roswell, but they'll increase significantly due to the naval flight training that will take place from late January to the end of March by the operations that have moved here from Corpus Christi, Texas. This will also have a significant economic benefit to Roswell restaurants and hotels and fueling aircraft over this timeframe. When you see some of these young naval aviators in Roswell, be sure to take time to greet them, to thank them for being here, and to thank them for their service. Income and expense reconciliation at the Air Center over the last six months, per information presented at our meeting, indicates a minor upside of three thousand dollars for the last six months. That's maybe not great news, but that's certainly better than going the other direction. So we can all be, all be thankful for that, and it not being, at this point, a huge drain on the city coffers. The BLM taxi lane project, which will provide better separation from BLM and our MRO tenants during, especially during the fire season at the Air Center, and will also provide an easier operational environment for BLM as they, as they get ready for the fire season. And this, this, the design phase for this project is to begin in mid-March. Construction is hopeful to begin after the fire season in September, October, with an estimated ninety-day construction phase. So towards the end of the year, we should have that special area set up for BLM, which will benefit the Air Center and BLM and our MRO. BLM, which will benefit the air center and BLM and our MROs. The ADB lighting project to repair and replace runway lighting has begun. This is a one-year-plus project that will provide more reliable lighting and significantly improve landing, takeoff safety at the RAC. Most of the electrical service wiring was installed by the Air Force in the nineteen fifty's by burying the wires in the ground. They're not in conduit. So all that wiring gets to come out, put in conduit, and hopefully that will, long-term, benefit our airport and the safety for everyone that's involved landing and taking off at our airport. The strategic plan for the RAC with Meaden Hunt is proceeding with the second onsite meetings currently scheduled for February the twentieth. The strategic plan is expected to be completed before the end of twenty twenty-four. The southeast corner of the RAC, which is the focal point of Phase Two of the Water Infrastructure Plan, is moving forward, and the contractor has indicated a completion date at the end of June this year. The air center staff has identified several renovation remodeling projects at the terminal, uh, at the terminal building that hopefully can be accomplished using the two million dollar grant from the state. They have been instructed to develop cost estimates for the various projects and provide the AAC with a priority list and cost estimates to help the commission decide, pardon me, decide which projects to complete with the existing funding. If any of the councilors have comments on those, please run those through airport staff or myself. Uh, Mr. Bill Prather provided information to the AAC reference possibly developing two automobile storage garages out at the air center. Each of the garages would have six spaces for vehicles, or vehicle storage. One garage would be close to the avflight facility on vacant land, and one garage would be on the north side of Earl Cummins Loop across from the existing parking lots. This project is in the due diligence phase by the offeror for them to determine if they want to move forward with development of the garages. The offeror is to provide his decision at the next AAC meeting. Uh, my last item that I want to talk to you about, I'm going to actually let Mike Espiritu come up here. As everyone knows, he is the Ra-Ra Guru. And I want to, I don't get the option or the opportunity very often to personally thank Mike, but I don't think we'd be nearly as far along on this as we are without him taking a hold of this thing and running with it, and it could possibly be one of the biggest things that's ever happened to Roswell. So I'm going to let Mike update you on where we are with Ra-Ra.
Mayor, councilors, first off, I want to say thank you for each of you and all your work you've done. Um, I'm just one of many that have contributed to this opportunity in Roswell and New Mexico. If it wasn't for the collaborative work of all of you, Mighty Mike Matthews, Karen Sanders, Lance Back there, Rayman, I mean Chad Cole, so many people have came together to make this an opportunity that'll be a showcase for a long time if we're successful. So to give you an update, the EDC continues to, to coordinate and speak with, with Terry Matter. Many of you know Terry, you've met him. Uh, Terry is the site selection chairman for the team that's evaluating the cities. And as you may have heard, and to my understanding, there were over thirty communities across the country that bid on this opportunity. And as a reminder, it brings over a hundred million dollars in economic impact every year, without any multipliers. And that's according to the University of Nevada in Reno. And if you add the, the, the very modest cent five cent modifier, well, you can do the math, it's over nearly a hundred and eighty million dollars a year. It'll bring in a lot of people to Roswell, Chavas County, and all of New Mexico. When we, when Counselor Arnold and I visited the surrounding communities and visited with those different folks, you know what, they came, they became as excited as we are about this opportunity. So where are we today? We submit our proposal. We became one of the six semi-finalists. It is a site visit, and now they're working towards the top three. We anticipate they'll announce their top three officially sometime next week. Then the negotiations will begin, and we'll look at a possible award date of sometime the end of March. Twenty twenty-four, this June, they will still have some activities, but there's no racing as they typically have in September. It's a seven-day event with many days on both ends. A lot of folks, nearly seventy to eighty thousand people will be in Roswell, a little bit more than we already have today, right? But we know, and as Counselor Corn can tell you, we can do this, and I believe we can. Well, when they come here in twenty twenty-five, and I want to be hopeful and say they're coming here in twenty twenty-five, because this year they're not having a race. They're having an airshow in Reno, their last one. They'll already have the Navy Blue Angels. I know that Counselor Chapel is very happy about that, seeing those blue jets flying in over our community. They'll have the Canadian Snowbirds, and not our community, but in Reno, but, uh, Canadian Snowbirds, and the Air Force will bring their F-15 demo team. It's not just air racing. As filler to the races, they have an airshow and have exhibits. It's a pretty darn big deal. Those of us that had the opportunity, six of us that had opportunity to go up there and see the races this past September, as, as Mike Matthews can tell you, absolutely amazing. So, their plan is to award the end of March, select the community, and in June of next year-ish, they'll hold, they have to hold a PRS. What is that? Well, that's a pilot recertification school. They have to recertify every single pilot again before they can race in the fall. It's an FAA requirement because as a reminder, it's the only FAA accredited air race in the country. So, the PRS will happen mid-next year and racing in twenty-five in the fall. And what's good about September for us is it's right after Labor Day weekend in Ruidoso when the horse racing's completed, hotels are free, and it's right before Bluen Fiesta. And as you can see, the opportunity for people to come to New Mexico, and not only here in Roswell, but really truly visit and explore New Mexico. And every year they come, they can see something else, from Carlsbad Caverns to the White Sands Monument to, you name it. We, if we are successful, which I, in my gut, as, as Counselor Oropesa and I talk about, in our guts, we feel pretty good about this. But when we are successful, as I would like to say, we have a lot of work due. And recently, the mayor and I have been up in Santa Fe. We've been working towards gathering some funding as a result of those discussions we've already had with the team. We're very fortunate to have the lawmakers we have in Santa Fe that represent us, because, for example, Senator Nybert, Kenny Azell, Representative Azell, and, and the others, I don't want to say them all, but all of them are working towards pushing money from their capital lay to this event. Uh, Greg Nybert has, Senator Nybert has put in a bill, and you may have heard about it, Senate Bill one ninety-nine. You can follow it when you get a chance, ten million dollars to help support the infrastructure costs of the air race. I testified with the mayor at the Senate bill late Tuesday night, and it received a do pass. Next is on to the Senate Finance, and we'll see how that goes. The companion House bill by Representative Azell and Representative Jared Hembry and several others, that, I testified on that bill, House Bill two forty-five, and that passed with a do pass at House Transportation Committee, and it'll head to the House Finance Committee as well. One of the great opportunities that we have is having a mayor like Tim Jennings support us with his, his leadership, not only in the past at the legislature in Santa Fe, but today with his ability to generate the activities, to have meetings with key people, one including our governor. We met with the governor on Monday afternoon, and we evicted her about the races, and she is totally on board. She'll support us when she can. We don't know what that means yet, quite yet, but she is very supportive. So I want to share with you that everyone I've spoken to everywhere supports this event, everyone. And how could you not? It's a big deal for New Mexico, especially a big deal for Roswell and Chavas County. Hopefully, when we're allowed to announce that officially the top three, you'll hear about it, and then we'll begin negotiations with, with the group, and then we'll see how we, we pan out. So keep your fingers crossed, and we'll keep your breasts, and I stand here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Espiritu.
Thank you, Mike. It's, uh, it's always nice to have a cheerleader for the city of Roswell, and you do a much better job of cheerleader than I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kunkel, for your, your, for your work on behalf of the city and the air races in Santa Fe. It was amazing how many legislators said, yeah, I want to see that. I want to do that. And we had people from, you know, from lots of different areas, Los Cruces and all around the state that was really excited about this air race when we were up there. It was very, it was, it was a nice thing. Okay, so moving right along, we've already done public participation, so if we could, then I believe on item twenty, that is, uh, ordinance number twenty-three dash thirteen to hold a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen, an ordinance for the sale of real property. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen for the sale of real property to the Overland Group in the amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Hey, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Corn, I heard you first, so, Councilman Corn, the second. Okay, is there, uh, Todd, would you?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So tonight before you is ordinance twenty-three thirteen to hold a public hearing and adopt proposed ordinance twenty thirteen, twenty-three thirteen for the sale of real property. That property, of course, is located just south of the Wool Bowl, east of North Grand Avenue, and just north of East College Boulevard, right there on the corner by the racetrack. You can see it there up as Exhibit A. There's a couple of photos there from the ground level showing the site. So the Overland Group has offered the city a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, thirty-six dollars for the one point five, five-plus acre tract of land. City management has reviewed the site, and the city had no plans on developing that portion of land. So the city attorney has reviewed the purchase and sale contract from the Overland Group, and this item has been submitted, was submitted to legal for the review. Um, it was recommended that the legal committee meeting, as stated, at the Thursday, January twenty-fifth meeting of a vote to four to oh, to send it here to full city council. Um, that was postponed once earlier because we wanted an opportunity for the, we're going to call it the New Blackdom Memorial Gardens Group to meet. Um, they are forming, um, from what I understand from what came out of that first meeting that I was there, um, they appointed somebody to head up the group. So they have all of our property, available property options still on the table, including the northern half of the property just above what we are intending to sell, um, in case they want to do something there for their Blackdom Memorial Project. That property is still avail, available to them, as well as any other available, uh, city of Roswell property that we have at the time that they decide what they're going to do and what they want to bring forward. So the city stands at the ready to help out, uh, the Blackdom Memorial Group. So again, um, this ordinance twenty-three thirteen is, um, to hold a public hearing for the sale of the Overland property. Um, it's approximately eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars per acre, um, and it falls under the NM section three fifty-four for the sale or lease of property, and we're following those guidelines today. And I stand for, any questions?
Do you have any questions, uh, councilor? Seeing none, we have a motion by Counselor Hildebrand, seconded by Counselor Corn for ordinance number twenty-three dash thirteen to hold a public hearing to consider adopting this, if the, to consider adopting ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen in order to sell the real property, uh, that we've discussed. Okay, we need the majority of all members.
Yes, we said it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, even it is not. It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand and thirty-six dollars.
Yes, sir.
So if the clerk would call the roll.
Mr. Mayor?
Use your voting box, too, I think.
Mr. Mayor, we need to see if there's any citizens
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
In favor.
Well, no one signed up. Is there anyone that care to speak in behalf for, for or against, uh, this ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen on the sale of this property? For it or against it? Okay, seeing none, if the clerk could call the roll.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hildenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson? Counselor Chapel?
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash thirteen to hold a public hearing concerning the sale of the property has duly passed, so we'll get that scheduled. Next, we have ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one to hold a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one authorizing the execution and delivery of water project fund loan grant agreement by and between the New Mexico Finance Authority. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero-one authorizing execution, delivery of water project loan fund grant agreement by, by and between NMFA. Uh, the project is, total funding is nine million, six hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars with one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars in a loan, and eight million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in a grant.
And we have a motion. Do we have, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Lady Second by Council Lady Halverson.
Mayor, Council, what you have before you is a resolution for the Hobson Flood Prevention Water Trust Board Loan Agreement. As you can see, the Water Trust Board has been very generous with this application. It's 87% grant, 13% loan, and the loan over 20 years. The state is 60, can't see that very well, $60,000 a year, which would likely come out of the road fund or the general fund, since drainage is usually tied into that. Part of the process is you have the public hearing. If it's accepted, then the rest of the process is the legal and financial stuff with the loan closing, which I believe the loan closing would be in March. And if it's passed here, engineering will go ahead and put out an RFP so we can start looking for a consultant to take the recommendations from the 2000 drainage plan and start putting plans together so we could bid it out and go to work. And I stand for any questions.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak for or against ordinance 24-01 on this proposed plan? Anyone care to speak for or against it? Seeing none, are there any councilors that would care to ask a question of this project? Councilor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor. In Finance Committee, we tagged this to the road fund, and I don't have any questions. Well, I do have a question for you. Is this, any of this funding tied to money that was received during the flood that we had a couple of years ago?
Negative. This is all a separate transaction.
Okay, so it's, it just...
Yeah, this is a standalone agreement, not tied to anything else, Councilor.
Well, that's all my questions. I just want to point out to the members, Mr. Mayor, that Finance Committee, we tied it to the road fund, and the road fund comes out of the general fund. So what you're really doing here is you're obligating the general fund through the road fund to make these $64,000 a year payments. And I just think everybody needs to be crystal clear on that, especially right now, that the general fund is in the red, 1.8 million. Ms. Davies? Ms. Davies?
Birthday.
The general fund is now in the red, 1.8 million, give or take.
Okay, there it is. At the end of January, we were 1.9 million in the red, and we had encumbrances of 2.3 million.
And that 2.3 is not part of the 1.9.
The 1.9, right.
1.9, because we haven't cut the check yet.
Right.
So just a little education, Mayor, that's all I...
And if I add up the museum, zoo, and golf, the deficit is 3.8, which are all part of general fund. They're in their own fund, but they are funded by general fund. The deficit's 3.6 million, and the encumbrances are 3.3 million.
Keep that in mind, Mr. Mayor, fellow members.
Any further comments? Okay, on a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Halverson, as to passage of ordinance 24-01 to hold a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance of 24-01 for the execution of a delivery of water project loan fund grant agreement by and between NMFA, if the clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Maruho.
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
Yes.
Councilor Heldenbrand.
Aye.
Councilor Oropesa.
Yes.
Councilor Halverson.
Yes.
Councilor Chappell.
Yes.
Councilor Corn.
Yes.
Councilor Arnold.
Yes.
Councilor Cabin.
Yes.
Councilor Moore. Motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, and maybe alleviate a little flooding in Roswell if we can get that working there. Okay, next, for item 22, under new business, this is a request for an RFP to, for approval to advertise RFP-24-009, scope of work for all, for air services development and consulting services for the Roswell Air Center. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve to advertise RFP-24-009, the scope of work for the air service development and consulting services for the Roswell Air Center.
We have a motion, my Councilman Hildebrand.
Second.
Second by, pardon who?
Cabin.
By Cabin?
Yes.
Okay, by Council, second by Councilor Cabin. Okay, for the approval of RFP-24-09, scope of work for air service development and consulting services. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider approval of, to advertise RFP-24009, the scope of work for air service development and consulting services. The air service development consultant selected will provide market definition analysis to define and analyze the airport's air service trade area, obtain level of interest and travel information. The consultant will analyze Roswell catchment area through geographical and ticket sales leakage, monitoring air fares, traffic seats, and average trends. The consultant will also be providing a monthly report back to the city of the average fares for the top 15 markets, analyze whether the air fares are at an acceptable range, and changes in any capacity and schedules at competitive airports such as Santa Fe, Albuquerque, Lubbock, and Hops. The consultant will also analyze route performances and recommend airlines and routes that would be financially viable for Roswell. Ask for your consideration.
Okay, we have, is there any questions of, Ms. Criego on RFP-24-20 by members of the council? Council Lady Moore.
I just have one question. Do you also consider, you know, how the Carlsbad and Clovis have a similar, like a smaller flight? Did y'all consider, will y'all look into those, compare those also, or no?
They're much smaller aircraft that fly out of Carlsbad. They're less than 20 passenger.
We didn't consider those at all. Okay, thank you.
It's hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Further comments? Is there, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak for or against RFP-24-009 for scope of work for air service development and consulting services for the Roswell Air Center? Is there anyone who would care to speak for or against it? Council, excuse me, Mr. Spiritu.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, this is an important piece for the Reno Air Racing Association as they look to us for location. One of the areas that they remark to us is how do we get people, you know, 70,000, 80,000 people in and out of Roswell? So I think this is an important piece on how we can continue to generate more air service and not just one location. As you know, we used to go to Phoenix. Well, we don't go to Phoenix anymore. When the city was going to these conferences in the past, the EDC was there as well, and we met with the different airlines, with a consultant, and talked about those different types of opportunities. We support this RFP and the work towards getting us other service lines so we can move people in and out of Roswell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiritu. Are there any further comments by anyone for or against item 24-009, scope of work for the air service development consulting services? Okay, any, any councilors? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Criego. On a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilor Cabin, to approve item 22, which is the RFP for 24-009, to approve the advertise, for the scope of work for the air service development and consulting services for the Roswell Air Center. If the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And if you want to mark their, all those, are there any opposed? By vote, unanimous vote of, whoops, excuse me, by vote of nine in the affirmative and one abstention by Councilor Chappell, the motion is duly passed. Has duly passed the council. Item 24-009 has, for the scope of work, RFP for the scope of work for air service development has duly passed. Okay, next we have item 23. Item 23 is for, item 23 is for an RFP-24-008 for approval of scope of work for the visitor center management services. And have a motion by Councilor Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve to advertise for RFP-24-008 for the scope of work for the visitor center management services.
Motion for that, is there a second? Carlos, Councilor Maruho beckons it. And so, okay, next we have Todd.
Hello again. So RFP-24008, of course, is the scope of work for the visitor center management services. Consider recommending RFP-24008, scope of work for the visitor center management services. Presently, the city expends $358,529 a year on that. So the administration seeks to request outside proposals for visitor center management to compare current operations. RFP-24008 has been approved by city attorney. After some discussion at November 16th, 2023 legal meeting, the item was tabled for more questions, and then they were the first to consider the proposed scope of work, and with a vote of three to zero at the last meeting on January 25th, 2024, it was approved three to zero to send here to full council. So we're asking for you to approve the scope of work for visitor center management services. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. We have Council Lady Halverson.
So the amount that you're spending now, how much of that's going to salaries? How many employees are there? How many employees? Is this current, or is the amount that we have, is that from last fiscal year?
Councilor Halverson, the amount mentioned in the abstract was the budgeted amount for operations and personnel for the whole year of this fiscal.
We've changed personnel since then, correct? So that amount could be much, considerably less than what we were paying, is that...
I'm not sure how many person, Mr. Cole would know, how many employees are at the
The majority, what, can you go back to the slide before? That 358,000, what's the, what's the brunt of that from? But we've changed staff since then, correct? So that could be considerably less. I'm just, I'm just thinking, if we keep it within the city, we wouldn't be spending that much with salaries at this point, with only two, two and a half part-time people supervised. But surely, their salary doesn't add up to that. That's, does that include electricity and water and everything, too? I guess my question is, I'm guessing the majority of that amount there is salaries. But we've changed personnel since then, so that could be considerably less than what you've budgeted here.
Okay, next we have, yes, Council Lady, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Yeah, to answer, maybe give you some light there, Councilor Halverson. We brought this through the legal committee to look at this, and the person in charge of the visitor centers no longer is staff of the city. The question was asked to come back and tell us how you would operate that center different than what we operate it now, change the hours of operation. We never did receive that information, never did. So I think this is a step to find out how we could compare this RFP against what our actual real costs are to this. Questions I had when we were in committee was, how does this thing get efficiently run, and we make sure that these people that are going to possibly be awarded the proposal if we so elect, operate it in the same manner as we see fit, that in the best interest of the city? That was the problem I had with it, is how we manage that portion of this. But, you know, this is a step that they wanted to go down and get an RFP, so we said, "Okay, let's do it." And then we'll weigh it whether we do it or not, so.
Yes, sir, that's, that's the idea.
I mean, just because we put an RFP out doesn't mean that we change the operation. It's whether we're going to decide to change the operation at a later date.
Yes, sir.
Look at it before it actually could happen, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Chappell.
Just a quick question for Todd and the city manager, if you don't mind. Is 358,529, does that include the assets that we have out there as well, as far as like the stuffed animals, t-shirts, glasses, and everything? Is that included in that as well?
Yes, sir. That is, my understanding is that is all the total cost, including the inventory for the visitor center. Yes, sir.
So the bulk of this would not be, wouldn't be the wages or anything else, just assets on hand that we currently have?
Assets on hand, the numbers we've looked at are approximately 60,000, from 30 to 60,000 dollars per year in inventory.
Okay, any, any further comments? Is there, thank you, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against RFP-24-08 for the scope of work of the visitor center management services? Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against it? No one? Okay. Oh, excuse me, Council Lady Halverson.
When we do the RFP, will we be regulating what hours they have to stay open and that kind of...
to even be a complete application. But the whole application package of what they're trying, of what they were willing to provide is the bulk of the scoring.
Are there any further comments by, any councilman? Any further comments by anyone? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Todd, we, on a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilman Maruho, for the approval of item RFP-24-008 for approval of the scope of work for the visitor center management services, if the clerk would call the roll. Please be sure you vote, okay. By a vote of 10 in the affirmative and, so, I'm just reading it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Whoops, whoops, that's, excuse me, that's, that's a little different then, so, on a vote of nine in the affirmative and one in the negative, RFP 24-008 approval for scope of work for the visitor ma, center management services has been approved. Okay, next we go to item 24. And that is approval to award ITB 24-002 to rebid for construction of the General Douglas L. McBride Veterans Memorial Pavilion Edition in the amount of 477,841.37, including gross receipts taxed to Wade Construction. Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt the ITB 24-002 for construction at the Douglas, General Douglas L. McBride Veterans Memorial Provisional, I can't speak tonight, addition of the amount of 477,841.37. Mayor, before we get into this, I think this is the whole amount that we were granted a couple of years ago to get this project going, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, this is what we got started with, and I make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Corn, is there a second?
I second.
Councilman Johnson, seconds? Okay. Okay, so now, Mr. Mac Rogers, would you please explain the project?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Agenda item number 24 is requesting approval to award invitation to bid 24-002 rebid for construction of the General Douglas McBride Veterans Memorial Pavilion Edition in the amount of 477,841.37 to Wade Construction. Funding for this project is provided in part through state appropriation 23-HC4074, which was re-appropriated from the original appropriation in 2019. And I'd like to amend my abstract. After consulting with finance, we would request that the excess cost of 67,282.52 come from the cannabis fund. This, this would provide for two honor guard shelters adjacent to the existing committal shelter. And here is, here's a rendering of, of those shelters. Our, our approximate construction timeline for this project is nine months. And I'll stand for any questions, thank you.
Before we go to that, on questions of the bill, is there any opposition to the changing of the funds from the general fund to the cannabis fund? As was requested, is that in agreement with both the sponsor and the second? To change those funds from the general fund to the cannabis fund, is that agreeable to your, your motion? Is there any other objection by the, any other member of the council? Seeing none, then we would accept that, the chair would accept that motion? If that's agreeable, so. Anyone in the audience that has any problems with that? Anyone in the audience? So, this fund is not from the general fund, it will come from the cannabis fund? Okay, is that what?
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, did Counselor Corn make the motion for the friendly amendment?
So, moved.
And who was the second?
And the second, Mr. Johnson's second.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, we are on that discussion, but there's no objection by anyone else, any other councilman? All, well, I should probably do a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by a vote of 10 in the affirmative, none in the negative, that amendment has been adopted to change the funding source to the cannabis fund. Next, okay, Mr. Rogers. Well, we've already done you, I guess, is there? Councilor Orpressa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. I, I know that you all had a meeting with the Chavis County Veterans Group, and I talked to one individual that was pretty upset, maybe not this one, but the previous proposal. Is, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The, this project has been designed twice. The Chavis County Veterans Group rejected the first design, but they were, they were a part of this design and this, this set of construction documents. And I have, I have spoken with the Chavis County Veterans Group, and, and they support this project at this time for the two honor guard shelters to match the existing committal shelter.
Or at least they're representative, I, I guess they was at the meeting, supports it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak for or against ITB 24-002 for the rebid on the General Douglas McBride Veterans Memorial Pavilion Edition? Is there anyone else who would care to speak for or against? Anyone else? Okay. Okay, so, thank you, Mr., any further comments, Mr. Rogers? Seeing none, if the clerk would, now we have a voice vote for council, if we would have a voice vote on a motion by Councilman Corn, seconded by Councilor Johnson, for approval of ITB 24-002, the rebid for the construction of the Douglas, Gen, what? Construction of the General Douglas L. McBride Veterans Memorial Pavilion Edition in the amount of 477,841.37, with the extra funds coming from the cannabis fund that we needed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by a vote of 10 in the affirmative and none in the negative, I, item 24, ITB 24-002, for rebid on the construction of Douglas L. McBride Veterans Pavilion Edition, has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Oh, we got the next one anyway. Okay, we have item, item 25, for approval of the Wade Construction, the amount of not to exceed 300,000 dollars for using the RFP contract number 23-013 for general contracting services for the Roswell Museum Flooring Renovation Phase Two. Councilman Corn.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt RFP contract number 23-013, general contracting services for the Roswell Museum Flooring Renovation Phase Two.
Adopt, is there a second?
Second.
By council, seconded by Councilor Maruho. Okay, most of my councilors, Maruho. Okay, Council, Mr. Rogers.
Mayor, councilors, agenda item number 25 is requesting approval to higher Wade Construction in an amount not to exceed 300,000, using RFP contract 23-013 for general contracting services for floor, for the Roswell Museum Flooring Renovations Phase Two. Funding for this project is provided by state appropriation 23-ZH5040. This will provide for two epoxy terrazzo corridors to be installed at the north and south entrances. Here is a diagram of, of those corridors. Our approximate construction timeline for this project is, is eight weeks. I'll stand for any questions, thank you.
Okay, we have, are there, are there any questions concerning the higher Wade Construction not to exceed 300,000 dollars for the RFP contract number 23-013 for the Roswell Museum Flooring? We've discussed this a number of times, is there any, any comments from the council members? Seeing none, is there any comments from anyone on the floor? Caroline, would you care to speak in favor or against this item?
It is. No, I would speak in favor, we were excited to get the additional state appropriations in November, in the total of 638,000. And without that money, we wouldn't have been able to pursue this phase two of the flooring project. So, it'll make a more welcoming entrance, and then also the area in the back towards the courtyard. And with the epoxy terrazzo, we were looking for something, something that had a good aesthetics, but also was easy to maintain and was really hardy. And a material like this would last between 75 and 100 years, so definitely outlive myself. So, I'd be excited to have that as a contribution towards the renovation project.
If shop included in all?
It is, so this is really laying the foundation for the shop. So, the shop would be in what's called the Spring River Gallery right now, that small kind of pocket gallery on the way to the auditorium. So, that'll be the next part of our project with the further state appropriation funds that we have. So, this would be laying that initial foundation for that project.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would care to speak for or against the Roswell Museum Flooring Renovations Phase Two? Anyone else in the audience care to speak for or against it? Seeing none? Anyone on the council care to ask any questions? Seeing none? On a motion by Councilman Corn, seconded by Councilor Maruho, for the approval of Wade Construction in an amount not to exceed 300,000, 300,000 dollars using the RFP contract number 23-013 for gen, general contracting services for the Roswell Museum Flooring Renovations Phase Two, if clerk would call the roll.
That would be a voice vote, unless you want a roll call.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's checked right to, and I just.
Mr. Mayor, can we not use the boxes? We voted on item 24, we voted twice. So, we, we're, we're not going to vote for item 25 on our boxes.
Well, it was your idea to use the boxes to start with, don't pick on me. Okay, well, you know, I don't have to vote, so you can't blame it on me for not voting twice, I didn't vote once. So, just be fair. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, by a vote of 10 in the affirmative, none in the negative, you have finally got the museum flooring redone, item, contract number RFP 23-013 for Wade Construction to finish your flooring. Okay, thank you, now.
Thank you.
If we can move right along here about item 26. Item 26, boy, Counselor Corn, you've been busy, and, boy, you've been really busy.
Well, you told me not to mess it up, and I'm working on not messing it up, so keep the ball rolling.
Okay, item.
I think, for just clarification, Mr. Mayor, I think that on the last item, because we changed the funding source from GRT to cannabis, that, and you asked for unanimous consent, and I'm not sure our clerk understood that I was gonna make a motion, but you didn't want me to make a motion. So, that's two votes, one was the amendment, and the other one's for the item, if that'll clarify your, your data.
Counselor Corn, was that not a friendly amendment?
Well, what you want to is unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent would be considered to be friendly. I, I don't know about your training, but I hope your deputy clerk will help you on that.
I'd agree with Molly. Take care of you, Molly, in one way or another.
A year later, I know she's the one that's tired, and wasn't us been driving home.
Counselor Corn, who was the second to the friendly amendment? Okay, so who was the, on the original motion, who was the second?
Well, she's starting a fight.
Same thing.
Maruho.
You're on thin ice now, young lady.
Councilor Maruho. Okay, so, you're working.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, item 26, I move.
I'm ready.
Okay.
If you'll be quiet, I'll get this done.
Item 26, approval of the capital outlay funds request to approve the task force order K for engineering services to Armstrong Consultants for design of the new electrical vault and install new radio control equipment for the airfield to Roswell Industrial Air Frac, Air Center, Counselor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the capital outlay funds for task order K for engineering services to Armstrong Construction for design of the new electrical vault and install new radio controller equipment for airfield lighting. This is part of what Mr. Cunkel talked about just a minute ago.
Correct.
I have a motion for approval of the item 26, is there a second? By Council Lady Moore, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval of the task force K order for engineering service to Armstrong Consultants. Ms. Brady, would you please move quickly?
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm here again to ask for consideration to approve and allocate capital outlay funds and approve task order K for engineering services to Armstrong Consultants for design of the new electric vault and install new radio controller equipment for airfield lighting at the Roswell Air Center, as well as approve the purchase order for this project if passed. Funding source for task order K is through a MAP 23 grant in the amount of 468,750. 13,223.19 will be the local share for a total of 481,793.19, which includes GRT. This project was not in the fiscal year '24 airport enterprise budget, and the local share will come from the. share will come from the project savings budget line item. This project will be completed prior to fiscal year, so we will have these funds back in that project, that line item. And for a little background, as you heard earlier from Commissioner Canko, the existing airport vaults for both runway 32101735 are in poor condition and were constructed by the Air Force in the late 50s. The equipment is outdated. The scope of work will consist of a new enclosed electrical building, installation of conduits, electrical equipment, and new electrical regulators for each of the runways, and new computerized radio control equipment will also be installed to meet the electrical codes and FAA standards. Currently, what we are finding with the engineer from ADB on field is the Air Force had a unique way of getting the lighting system there. It crosses runways, it goes in the dirt, it comes back, it crosses again. So he is mapping all that out and getting it, we're finding out where the electrical problems are. Bravo is a really bad area, and so he's spending a lot of time on that taxiway. So.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this project? Item 26 for, to approve Task Force Order K for engineering services to Armstrong and Armstrong for design of the new electrical vaults and install a new radio controller for air equipment at the airport or on the runway. Anyone care to speak for or against it? Anyone care to speak for or against it? Okay, questions from the committee? Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I was looking at your total, and I believe it's off. It should be .69 cents and not .19 for the total amount, just for clarification.
$481,973.69.
If you go back to that, it was 750, but there was not, it was 750 in dollars. There were not two, a dot and two pennies, or two zeros, right? If you look, see, it's 700, so when you add that up, 468,750 dollars. There is not a dot and any pennies, so it has to end up in 19.
Oh.
I went to.
Federal government rounds everything up.
Thank you.
Oh, this is getting to be fun. We're going to be going a long time here tonight. That's good. Are there any further questions by members of the committee?
Mr. Mayor, I know that when we were in our finance meeting, we had some concern over the fact that this is something that is just pretty much automatically awarded to Armstrong Engineering as long as A fell below the budget of this deal. So there's no bids that went out for this, and so they automatically.
They are our on-call engineering service for the airport. We will be going out again and advertising July for the service again. It'll be a four-year contract, and Armstrong has a contract right now through October.
And I want to make sure that wasn't aimed at you. It's just that was a concern in our, in our finance meeting that this is handled that way.
This was a quick turnaround as far as the FAA, since it wasn't in our project list. We were notified in September that we had the grant, and so it was a quick turnaround. I think it was September 9th. We got the grant on the 11th, the mayor signed it, and it was executed by the FAA on the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Grego.
My understanding, there were some electrical problems because some of the old wiring is deteriorated to such a point that we are having problems with lighting on the field.
That is correct.
So that's why this was done in this manner. Next, we have Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Davies, what's our GRT rate? Because this was written in September 2023, and it's got our GRT rate of 7.5833. This is, is that what our GRT rate is now? Or are they willing to do this for that 7.58?
That is what they're willing to do it for.
They'll do it for it?
I think it's one-tenth of 1% higher than that.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I looked at that, and I think that's not the right rate.
It would be a touch lower.
But I'm willing to approve it at this level and let them come out of their pocket for the additional GRT, though.
Maybe Albuquerque's rate.
Have to pay the local rate, too. You have to pay the local rate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Grego, if you can, I hate to miss a possible education moment. So we do these four-year contracts with engineering firms. Is it because they have to have a specified type of okey-dokey, if you will, from the FAA and other entities dealing with airport construction?
FAA will require us to have an onsite, on-call engineering firm.
Okay. So the FAA says you got to have an on-call.
Yes.
Okay. And then, when are we going to bid this again?
This is just design.
No, no, not this, the engineering.
Oh, July. We go back out. Procurement's already started on the RFP.
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify that because we've got a lot of new people here that don't understand all of the requirements. I've been here for a while. I've been at the airport for a long time, and I don't understand them all. But, so it's, it's important that you kind of get in to what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments by anyone in the audience? Seeing none, are there any comments from any of your councilors? Seeing none? Okay, a voice vote here for item 26, for the approval to allocate capital outlay funds to approve the, approval of the Task Force K Order for Engineering Services to Armstrong Construction for design of new electrical vaults and install the new radio controller equipment for airfield lighting at the Roswell Industrial Air Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of nine and affirmative, one and the negative. Item 26, approval of the capital funds to Task Force Order K for engineering service to Armstrong Consultants for design of new electrical vaults and radio controller equipment as duly passed. Okay, so next we go to item 27. For approval, for approval of the mayor's recommendation for appointment of Planning and Zoning Committee as follows. For Position Two, Greg Holman, and for a partial term ending from October 12, 2023 to March 31 of 2026. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we approve Mayor Jennings' recommendation for the appointment of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Greg Holman, for a position two for a term ending March 31, 2026.
Motion to approve the appointment for Mr. Holman. Is there a second? Councilman Corn. Chapel, okay, council. Council, Chapel, seconds. Okay. We have on a motion to approve, are there any, is there any further discussion by members of the council? Is there any discussion from anyone in the audience who would like to express being for or against Mr. Holman's appointment to the Planning and Zoning Committee? Is there anyone in the, in the audience who would care to speak against him? Seeing none? If, and no opposition from, or questions from the council? We have to have a roll call vote of this, so it takes a majority of six of you all to approve it. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Maruho.
Yes.
Council Johnson.
Yes.
Council Hildenbrand.
Aye.
Council Oropesa.
Yes.
Council Halverson.
Yes.
Council Chapel.
Yes.
Council Corn.
Yes.
Council Arnold. Council Cabin.
Yes.
Council Moore. Motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you. On item 27, item 27 duly passed, the appointment of Mr. Holman to the Planning and Zoning Committee. Next, we go to item 29. This is, excuse me, 28. This is the approval of item of Mayor Jennings' recommendation of appointment to the drought funding task force of Mr. Nathan Cobb, a commercial, as a commercial customer. We have Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we approve Mayor Jennings' recommendation of appointment to the drought planning task force of Mr. Nathan Cobb, who is a commercial customer.
Motion by Councilman Hildebrand is a second by, by Councilman Maruho? Taken by Councilman Maruho. Is there any questions of member, any of the city councilors on my appointment of Mr. Cobb to our drought planning task force? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak for or against the appointment of Mr. Cobb as, to the drought planning task force? Is there anyone that would care to speak for or against this appointment of Mr. Cobb? Okay, seeing none? If the clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Maruho.
Yes.
Council Johnson.
Yes.
Council Hildenbrand.
Aye.
Council Oropesa.
Yes.
Council Halverson.
Yes.
Council Chapel.
Yes.
Council Corn.
Yes.
Council Arnold.
Yes.
Council Cabin.
Yes.
Council Moore. Motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you for approving these gentlemen. I would, on a, by a vote of 10 and the affirmative, none and the negative, Councilman, or, excuse me, Mr. Nathan Cobb, as a commercial customer, is appointed to the drought planning task force. Okay, next we have item 29. Item 29 is ordinance, ordinance 24-02 zoning case zero, or, excuse me, is case 23-007 to annex and authorize to advertise for public hearing for the adoption of proposed ordinance 24-02 to annex a 10-acre tract into the municipal boundary of Roswell. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing for ordinance 24-02, which is for zoning case 23-007, annex of approximately 10 acres.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilor Cabin, to approve ordinance 24-02 zoning case 23-007 to annex and to advertise for a public hearing for adopting ordinance 24-02 for 10 acres, adding 10 acres tract to the municipal of Roswell. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for considering authorizing to advertise for a public hearing to possibly adopt proposed ordinance 24-02 to annex a 10-acre tract into the municipal boundary. The applicant petitioner is Carry On Spilling Services. They submitted a voluntary petition for annexation of their 10 acres at 402 East Brasher Road in order to connect to city water and sanitary sewer for light industrial use. The applicant petitioner intends to develop the lot for industrial trucking use, which is similar to what is next door inside the city boundary. This is a map of the area. The star is on the property at 402 East Brasher Road. It's across the street from the FedEx Building, and next to Legendary Services is on the west. This is a zoning map showing light industrial all around it as well. This is an excerpt from the land division plat showing the 10-acre tract from the 37.71 acre parent property. And these are photos I took of the property and the corridor. The proposed annexation is in alignment with the comprehensive land use plan of 2016. And this is a carry-on annexation plat by LT Serving. As of today's date, the Planning and Zoning Office has received zero written protests and zero inquiries for the zoning case that was heard by the City of Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission on January 23, 2024. And the Chavez County Planning and Zoning Office submitted a letter dated January 19 supporting annexation of the 10-acre tract. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend to the city council approval of the annexation. Staff is supportive of this, the council authorizing to advertise for a public hearing. And if the motion is approved, the public hearing will be advertised to hold the city council public hearing next month on March 14. Stand for questions.
Okay, on Council Lady Halverson.
I just want to clarify the, the cost to install all the pipes and everything. That's on the, the cost to install all the pipes and everything, that's on the contractor, correct? Whoever's developing the property.
That's correct. It's the, the developer.
So the city just benefits by having them on the tax rolls?
Correct. So there is water and sewer on the north side of Brasher.
Counselor, that's one of the reasons why the annexation is going through. There's a very similar, as she stated, there's a very similar trucking company to the west of it that's in the city limits, and then the property line, and then the east side is not in the city limits. Well, this guy wants to build a very similar. He wanted sewer services. The current policy is if you want sewer, you have to be in the city limits. It's not like water where you, we'll charge you twice the rate. So he's very interested. He said, no problem, I'll come into the city limits, which, from an economic development point of view, now we get the grocery seats and not the county.
Council, seeing, is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak for or against ordinance 24-02 and the, and the annexing of, or 23-007 annexation of this 10-acre tract on 402 East Brasher? Is there anyone else in the audience who care to speak for it? Okay, are there any other questions from the councilmen? Seeing none? On a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilor Cabin, to approve item 29, the ordinance 24-02 zoning case 23-007 annexed to authorize to advertise for a public hearing for the adoption of ordinance 24-02 to annex 10 acres and 10-acre tract at 402 East Brasher into the municipal boundary. If the clerk would call the roll.
Councilor Maruho.
Yes.
Council Johnson.
Yes.
Council Hildenbrand.
Aye.
Council Oropesa.
Yes.
Council Halverson.
Yes.
Council Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cavan?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you, we'll see you next month.
Okay, on a vote of ten, and the firm, we have none and the negative. Item, uh, twenty-nine, ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two, zoning case twenty-three dash zero-seven annex to authorize for a public hearing, uh, for, to annex a ten-acre tract into the municipal valley at four oh two East has duly passed. Okay, next, we go to item thirty. This is, well, this will be a good one. Okay, item thirty, uh, is, item thirty is ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, a noise ordinance to authorize to advertise for a public hearing to consider the adoption of proposed ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, a noise ordinance. Counselman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-three dash one-five, which is a noise ordinance.
Motion adopted by Counselman Hildebrand is your second.
Second.
Counselman Corn uh, seconds the motion to adopt, uh, to authorize for a public hearing to adopt a proposed ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, a noise ordinance. Okay, Councilman, uh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Intima?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Uh, as you recall, uh, late, last year, this was referred back to the legal committee. The legal committee reexamined it and made a couple of minor adjustments. In particular, noises in terms of construction and household work, uh, yard work, things like that, had been moved, uh, from dusk till dawn, or seven to seven, whichever is longer. And the fireworks, uh, prohibition is from, uh, there's a five-day window, two days before the Fourth of July, two days after New Year's and Christmas, ending at two AM. Otherwise, it's, uh, pretty much the same ordinance that you guys saw a few months ago. Thank you.
Any further comments? Counsel Lady Arnold?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I would actually like to propose an amendment uh, to section B, uh, well, B, exceptions, section eight under fireworks. I would like to request that we make an amendment to strike the word second and the word sixth and add and between fourth, fifth. This is, um, page three seventy-six. Actually, I'm sorry, page three seventy-seven. And if I may, um, kind of give, shed some light on why I'm requesting the amendment. Um, I think I've, um, been advocating since the initiation of this document for veterans who suffer from PTSD and during our July Fourth holiday and, uh, New Year's Eve, n- not so much New Year's Eve, but, um, this community tends to do fireworks for a good amount of time. And it can stress out many of our veterans or people who just have PTSD, um, for an extended period of time. And I feel that it should be limited, actually, that was the whole point of proposing this and asking the city attorney to look into what we could do. So you, having five days is not actually a true fix. It's kind of the same thing we had before. So I'm continuously proposing that we strike two of those days and keep it, um, to the third, fourth, and fifth. And I understand that, this has kind of been my dilemma, is trying to figure out how that works considering when things fall on calendars. So I don't know if there's a more appropriate way to write this. And I do see that we're actually just authorizing to advertise for public hearing. So, um, there's, um, still time to continue to look for solutions. But at this moment, I'm asking to amend number eight under B, exceptions, fireworks, strike the word second, strike the word sixth, and add and between fourth and fifth.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, for an amendment. Uh, clerk, did you get the amendment? So we have a motion, uh, by Counsel Lady Arnold to, to, to amend that. Is there any? We have a motion by Counsel Lady Arnold to amend it, seconded by Counsel Lady Halverson. Seconded by Counsel Lady Halverson. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Any, anyone in the audience would care to speak on this motion to, to change those dates? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against her to change the dates? Okay, seeing none, and no discussion on the council, the, uh, clerk will, uh, call the roll on Counsel Lady Arnold's motion.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, on page three seventy-seven, line fourteen, we're striking the word second. On line fifteen, we're striking the word sixth and we're adding and between fourth and fifth. Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Oh.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cavan?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Motion passes eight to two.
Passes eight to two, so, okay, we're back on the original bill. Is there any further discussion by any councilors to, uh, have proposed this public hearing for the north ordinance, uh, twenty-three dash fifteen? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak for or against having a public hearing considering ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen? Anyone care to speak for or against this ordinance? Uh, okay, seeing none, if the clerk would call the roll.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Haldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn? Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cavan?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Motion passes ten to zero.
Okay, item thirty point zero has duly passed the council, or ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen, to authorize for a public hearing to consider adopting this proposed ordinance, twenty-three dash fifteen, has duly passed. Next, we have item thirty-one. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-three to authorize for a public hearing to consider the adopting of proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero-three, amending chapter two of the city code. Counselman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we advertise for a, authorize to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting proposed ordinance twenty-three dash zero-three, which is amending chapter two of the city code.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Counsel Lady Arnold uh, to, uh, authorize to advertise a public hearing for adopting the proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero-three, amending the city code, chapter two of the city code. Okay, okay, so, Counselor Corn for qu- comments?
Mr. Mayor, this, this, in its, on its face presently before us, it's not a complete document. I call your attention on page two of the ordinance or two eighty, two, three eighty-two in your packet. It says, "The regular meeting of the governing body shall be held blank on the second Thursday of each month." I think we need to put a time in there. And I propose two o'clock.
Okay, we have Counselor Corn proposing to, on page three eighty-two, putting the time at two PM for our council meeting. That's Counsel Corn's proposed motion, is there a, um, second?
Second.
And a second by, uh, Counselor Johnson. Any, any further comments? Mr. Intima, would you like to address this? Pardon?
All right, Mr. Mayor, did you want to take a vote on that amendment first?
I'll let you comment, see what you say first, and then we'll...
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as some of you may recall, a little, about a year ago, um, a significant portion of this ordinance failed by majority, which is a quirk of the municipal code under state law. Uh, significant portions of that are brought back, in particular, how the officer, the unelected officers of the municipal corporation are selected and who are in fact, who would in fact carry signature authority on behalf of you, the governing body. Um, there are two other additions, though, that, uh, I'll talk about briefly. Uh, councilors Arnold and Proton Haldenbrand asked for a governing body ethics provision. This includes that. Uh, most notably, the Government Conduct Act is explicitly written into municipal code and there is an, an enforcement provision. The enforcement provision is, um, it's kind of a hybrid of the way many other municipalities do it. Albuquerque has the most extreme form where only, where anybody can make an ethics complaint to an independent ethics commission and statistically speaking, if you're running for office, at least one candidate within your district will be getting a complaint by the end of it. I think that has to do more with Albuquerque's candidate pool, but that's just me being a little... Oh, come on. In any event, um, here what happens is, if there's something, uh, we're restricting the governing body to create enforcement against itself. You guys are the governing body, nobody down here gets to stand in judgment of you as far as municipal things are concerned. So, uh, what would happen is, a complaint would be made, the manager and the lawyer would read it over to say, "Yeah, there's actually something here." And then that is caused to be presented to the council as a body entirely. From there, if there is agreement that a breach of the ethics code has occurred, the council can design any type of remedy that is, uh, allowed by law. So, uh, typically, you know, this can range anywhere from removal, from committee assignments. If it's something truly egregious, the council can instruct the city attorney to initiate proceedings in district court for removal of that elected official. Some other things in here that are worth noting, uh, you guys can't take gifts from people trying to get jobs from the city under this ethics code, which I think seemed reasonable. Uh, similarly, uh, campaign donations and electioneering shall not be done on city, uh, property when it's work hours. So go ahead and go do it in a park, but do it on the weekends. Next, the, uh, well, as Counselor Corn noted, uh, you guys should decide, but the ord, the old ordinance carried a six o'clock time for meetings. We left that blank after discussion in legal committee wanting the whole governing body to opine. And finally, the, at the end of this, and let me make sure I give you guys the right pages, uh, starting on page three hundred ninety-four of your packet, or page fourteen of the ordinance, there's a real property transaction portion. Uh, this was put in, in part presupposing some audit issues we might be having. Um, and generally speaking, it should speed up government for people interacting at small dollar amounts where you guys might not be interested. So you might have noticed that you will regularly get a one-year real estate contract that's worth five thousand dollars. It, it's a pretty small exchange for the governing body to have to look at every single time. So what we've done here is we've broken real estate transactions into four categories. Purchase of land, sale of land, lease of land by the city, lease of land from the city. The purchase of land, uh, we'll start with the simplest, is if it is under sixty thousand and within budget, we may do it. And if it's over sixty thousand, we bring it to you as any large purchase occurs currently under the procurement code. If we're selling land, uh, it, it depends on value of the land. If it's under ten thousand dollars, it would be administrative with the signature of the mayor and manager concurrently. Something important, uh, that I put in is that an elected official always has to be informed of any land sale by the city. These transactions will be reported to the next legal committee meeting. Uh, if it's between ten thousand and fif- and twenty-five thousand, it will be done by contract, standard real estate contracts. And then finally, state law requires any sale over twenty-five thousand to be by ordinance, as you guys have noticed already. So that would be written in. For leases, the city will allow, uh, management to enter into smaller leases that are within its, otherwise within procurement authority. So less, so a one-year co- a one-year contract for less than sixty thousand. No, this just makes it uniform with how we do all other purchases. That's when we're leasing out property. When we are, when the city is accept, taking property, we cap that at twenty thousand dollars to match the idea that this isn't a professional service that we're purchasing, but we are committing the city potentially to larger legal liabilities than a standard goods contract. That's the boring stuff. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, but, uh, like I said, the, the middle of this ordinance, um, was dealt with a lot in the previous council and has been discussed with most of you. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, are there any questions? Okay, Counselman Corn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know this is probably out of order, but I note a, a potential typo on page four, line thirty-one, the word "or" is used twice. I'd just like to point that out. I know we're on an amendment, but I found it and I'll forget where it is.
Thank you, counselor.
Page thirty-one?
Yes, sir.
Comments with correcting that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked for unanimous consent to remove the second "or" on line thirty-one, page in your packet, three eighty-four.
Are any objection to anyone, does anyone have a preference whether you take the first "or" out or the second?
Let's vote for you.
I don't care.
Okay, is there any objections to removing the word "or" from? One of the "ors" out. Seeing none, by unanimous consent, we'll remove one "or." Or the other. Okay, okay, right along, now, counsel, Counsel Lady Moore?
So we're just doing for a hearing right now, so the questions or the concerns that I have about some of the stuff taken out don't have to be discussed right now, right? So all the stuff that's marked down, just let me get it, understand, I maybe missed. The stuff that's marked out, that's marked through, that means it, it's removed from the original one?
Correct.
So, so that page is pretty much to be blank, so to speak, because all that stuff is gone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the stuff's about the changing the committees and all that stuff has yet to be conversated, or that's just from reading this, we're supposed to understand this change and all that, right?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's something I'm happy to answer questions on. Uh, yeah, legal committee, I guess, two separate hearings had dealt with this. The idea behind that was, uh, general services and infrastructure have a significant amount of overlap. Practically, I mean, it, by way of example, like, putting a road through part of a park and then putting it back on the streets would go to two different committees. And the idea was, because of the overlap, it's best heard at one time. And then, uh, if we were to eliminate that committee, we wanted to make sure council had equal representation. And so committees become five instead of four.
And the other one is about the quorum and all that, we, I'll, I'll, I'll call you, I'll ask you about those questions I have about taking the quorum out and understanding how you have a quorum if you take, if you remove that sentence.
And the reason, tho- those were out simply to shorten the code. Uh, everything cut from page three eighty-three, with the exception of the rules of order, is provided by statute.
Already there, okay. Thank you, no more questions?
Thank you, counsel, Counsel Lady Moore. Counselman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I object to the two o'clock time meeting we have had in the past. Boy Scouts have been here to make presentations. We've had young people and two o'clock, schools in session. And I object to that and that it would maybe hinder their participation of anyone who's in, in some type of school organization because it's great to see young people see government move slow. But, if this might preclude them, a two o'clock timeframe would might preclude them from being able to be in attendance. So, I am not in support of a two o'clock time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, is there any further comments? Right now, we have a motion before us by Councilman Corn and seconded by Counselor Johnson, setting our meeting time at 2:00 p.m. Okay, is there any further discussion? Anyone in the audience care to discuss about when we meet at two? Two o'clock or six o'clock, or whatever? Seeing none? If the, now, the motion would be, we have before us now is on, is on page 382 to insert 2:00 p.m. as the meeting time of the council. If the clerk would call the roll.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Hildebrand? Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
No.
Counselor Chapel? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Motion fails three to seven.
Counselor Corn, it was very close, but your motion has failed seven to three to place it in at two o'clock. Now, we would be at a position where the council, it's blank as this goes forward to public hearing. Is my way, I believe that's correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, unless there's another motion?
If you want, okay. Okay, Counselman Corn.
Mr. Mayor, since two o'clock didn't work, let's try four o'clock, so moved.
Okay, we have a...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for 4:00 p.m. by Counselor Corn and a second by Counselor Halverson. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, Counselor Moore, I'm going to assume you want to have a different time. Okay, so, if there's no other discussion, anybody in the audience care about the time, want to say anything? Get in trouble? Okay, so, okay, so we have the current motion by Counselor Corn is to move to 4:00 p.m. and seconded by Counselor Halverson. And if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Hildebrand?
No.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
No.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
You were complaining you didn't get the vote.
All right. We haven't passed that thing about where I can take gifts, is there? Their votes, no. So, by a vote of six. By a vote of six and the negative four and in...
Five.
Five in the, five yes and six no. I, the 4:00 p.m. duly does not pass. Okay, we're back on, we're back on being blank again. So, do we have another motion? Counselor Moore?
Already good.
Counselman Moore, or, yeah, Counsel Lady Moore, I'm sorry.
I've gained in votes.
Yes, ma'am.
Could y'all give Corn some popcorn or something, so he can give us a minute? I think closer to five o'clock. Give us a little more time, give chance, even though I think it's difficult for the staff because they're still kind of working. So, I think five o'clock will give us a little more time, so it's not so late. But, that's not giving them much time to get off of work and get here either. So, I want to say five, but I'm still okay with six. But, because of the staff, I think that, that takes them off of their job and it takes them, you know, shutting, shutting offices down to get here for the meetings and stuff. So, I don't, I, I, I'm going to change it, I want to stay at six.
Does that mean you withdraw?
My motion is to leave the time at six o'clock.
Okay, Counsel Lady Moore's motion is for 6:00 p.m. And that's Counsel Lady Moore's, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Hildebrand? Hildebrand is a second to 6:00 p.m. Is there any, for, anybody in the audience care for six? Anybody opposed to it? Counselors, are, any counselors have any items that they would care? Six, any comments? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
No.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn? Counselor Arnold?
Anticipation?
No.
Counselor Cabin?
No.
That a no?
That's exactly right.
Counselor, that was a no?
No.
Counselor Moore?
Okay, by a vote of six in the affirmative, four in the negative, 6:00 p.m. will be placed on page 382 in the blank spot. So, now, so are there any further discussion on ordinance 24-03 to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting or proposing ordinance 2403 amending chapter two of the city code? Anyone in the audience care to speak against it? Seeing, seeing no one and no one else less to speak, if the clerk would call the roll on item 31, ordinance 24-03 to authorize for a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance 2403, amending chapter two of the city code? Please call the roll. Has amended.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Counselor Moore? Motion passes ten to zero.
A motion of ten in the affirmative, none in the negative, ordinance 24-3 to authorize to advertise for a public hearing, hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance 24-03 amending chapter two of the city code has duly passed. Next, we have...
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I wanted to make sure that was with the blank filled in.
Yes, the blank was filled in. At 6:00 p.m. It doesn't mean that we can't have the same argument again in a, in a next council meeting or next, at our public hearing. Next, we have ordinance... Yes, ma'am, Counsel Lady Moore.
Copy of this to read before, can you email me a clean copy with the, so that I can, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Uh, yeah, counselor, the clean copy begins on page 399.
And the other part, okay.
Okay, next, on, it's noted on your paper, if you haven't seen it, it's addendum and it's, it's in your book. All right, we have, item seven, yes, was next. We had, from item seven, we moved it to 31A. And so, okay. Item seven was resolution, adoption of resolution 24-02 pursuant to the Mexico Open Meetings Act. So, we have counsel, we have, we need a motion by Counselor Hildebrand for the adoption of resolution 24-02 pursuant to the Mexico Open Meetings Act. We need a motion by Councilman Hildebrand. Did you so move?
I so moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Hildebrand moved for the adoption of ordinance, resolution 24-02, seconded by, uh, seconded by Counselman Cabin. Okay, if we could, Counsel Lady Moore, are you okay on this? Or we can go on? Or I didn't erase?
You just didn't clear it a while ago.
I didn't clear it, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Intima, explain item thirty, or item seven, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Open Meetings Act requires that the city every year pass a resolution stating its times for open meetings. This resolution does that. It's a resolution, so if any committee wants to change times in the future, or perhaps if the council would like to move to 5:00 p.m. next month, that's entirely doable, you just, we just do a new resolution. Thank you.
Sorry, you're out of order. Okay, this is, is a resolution 24-022 pursuant to the Mexico Open Meetings Act. Is there anyone in the audience who care to speak for or against the Open Meetings Act and our, and the city adopting it? Seeing none? Is there any counselor that would care to have Florida speak or make a motion? Counsel Lady Moore?
Yes, ma'am, counselor, so that would change depending on the ordinance?
Any further comments? Okay, as for item seven, so we have... Does this have to be a voice photo roll call?
Yes, sir, it's a resolution.
Okay, on a motion by Counselman Hildebrand, seconded by Counselman Cabin for the adoption of resolutions 24-02 pursuant to the Open Meetings Act requires that the city base what is the, resetting reasonable notice. All those, excuse me, you have to have a roll call? Okay, all those, if you, the clerk could call the roll, sorry.
Counselor Marujo?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Hildebrand? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin? Counselor Moore? Motion passes ten to zero.
By a vote of ten in the affirmative, none in the, uh, in the negative, we have adopted resolutions 24-02 pertaining to the Mexico Open Meetings Act. Now, we go to item 32. Okay, this item 32 is, uh, ordinance 24-04, the sale of real property at Roswell to authorize advertising for a public hearing adopting the proposed ordinance 24-04, the sale of real property at Roswell. Okay, on Counsel Hildebrand for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize to advertise for a public hearing adopting proposed ordinance 24-04 for sale of real property out the Roswell Center.
Second.
I don't know whether it was Chapel or, or Johnson or...
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, I don't actually have any documentation in my packet, nor does Counselman Marujo regarding this. Not in my package, no, but thank you. I never received it, no. Thank you.
Well, do we... Okay, so we have, we have a motion by Hildebrand and we have, we have a second by Johnson. Okay, now, we have, okay, we have two members that don't have this in their packet. Copy? Okay, Mr. Intima, please write them 32.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the last you're going to need to hear from me tonight. You guys know about the bus factory? It's been vacant for 16 years, 425,000 square foot of, square feet of otherwise prime real estate. A buyer has come because of the nature of the lease that was signed in the eighties and that will continue for another 35 years. It was a very long lease. It's diff, the title to the building and the land is bifurcated. The city and the purchaser, uh, city staff and purchaser believe it would be beneficial to unify the titles. We have been offered the fair market value for the property, which is approximately 45 times, 45.5 times the value of the leasehold annualized, which in real estate terms is a very, a very good-looking offer. Similarly, if we look at what we're getting in rent right now, we're getting $15,000 a month in rent. That's an annualized return on investment of .061%, which is significantly lower than the 2.4% we have to pay on bonds at the airport presently, or even lower yet from the 4.4% that a 30-year treasury bill would be offering us as a coupon. In short, the finance, the financials of this particular land aren't making sense for the airport. And because we're in a lease that's another 35 years long, it won't make sense until pretty much all of us are retired or gone a little past retirement. More importantly, the purchaser of this building is going to bring industry back to Roswell. Presently, we're looking at up to 330 jobs created within the next three years in the manufacturing sector for home manufacturing. This is exciting for us because the amount, the salary they're offering per individual is within 5% of the average household income in Chavez County. So, these will be good jobs for the county. GRT will increase and an otherwise fallow piece of land will be put to good use. For legal purposes, the sale has already been submitted to the FAA. We're waiting to hear back, but it is consistent with the compliance manual, part 22.16 and 17, in my legal opinion.
Hey, are there, uh, before we start... We have Counselman Corn.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how to work this box to talk, but can we get Micah Spirit to come up and tell us a little bit about this? Since this is an economic development deal for Roswell and Chavez County?
Well, good evening again, Mr. Mayor or counselors. We began this project about mid, early last year. The company will be manufacturing housing, so they'll be doing, working with a lot of folks in the construction trades. We're pretty excited about this opportunity. When we received the lead, the, the number one reason they... When we received the lead, the, the number-one reason they would wanted to consider Roswell over other locations they were seeking was because we had the plant, the bus plant. The four-hundred-twenty thousand square feet, as, as our city attorney mentioned, is a really important piece to this. It allows them to do the things that they need to do and do quickly. As you know, in business, uh, it's speed to market is very important, and for them to build a building would have taken them another couple of years, and they already have contracts for, for their housing with buyers. Uh, we anticipate them to be in production by, by mid-year. They'll grow their job count by about a hundred or so every year, uh, some a little bit quicker than others. The state economic development department, in fact, Kevin Wilson from the department, Kevin? They, through the, through the governor's office and the economic development department, we have secured a local economic development act, LITA, fund of four-hundred thousand dollars to help offset the cost of infrastructure renovation to the building. Uh, and that's in exchange for the jobs they create. If they don't create the jobs, then they have to repay the money, so there's a process for that. You'll see, once, if this is approved, that you'll see the IGA, which is the intergovernmental agreement, and the PPA, which is a, uh, project participation agreement, happen between the state, the city, and the city and the company in the near future for the LITA award. We do anticipate they'll do a J-Tape application, the Job Training Center Program, which can be quite lucrative to reimburse them for training, uh, people. And I want to share with you that we've been in talks with Dr. Sean Powell at the university and the public schools, but how we continue to move our, our young people, our students into vocational trades, many that we already have at, at the schools and at the, at the university, to create jobs for people here in Roswell. We are anxious, hopefully, to, to also work with, uh, possibly the Musclero tribe, uh, to help bring in some of that work in, into Roswell and maybe in some new, new population. So, it's a good project, you know, the building's been vacant a long time, um, as you know, and, uh, we have marketed that facility since I've been here to every project you can think of. So, we talk about that building a lot. It is a certified site to excel energy, uh, which takes a lot of efforts. We're pretty, pretty pleased that we have a buyer that's willing to take the risk, put about a twelve-million-dollar capital investment in this project and contribute to our economy, and most importantly, create jobs for Roswell and Chavez County. I stand for your questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a quick question, and I must have, I might have misread the, uh, the information in the paper, but they talked about, uh, destruction of, uh, buildings?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Pesca, they're not, they're not gonna demo, demo anything. They are gonna, the building is gonna be kept in place, they'll renovate the interior to accommodate the construction, uh, workflow they need. But no, they're not, they're not gonna demolition any of the, no, sir. That's correct, that is not correct, sir, they will not, to my knowledge.
So, the six-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, whatever that is, includes the, the building as it is, plus the land?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilor Pesca, uh, the building is four-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet by itself, and the land around it that they are purchasing is about forty-five acres, and they need that for parking. So, there is room also for expansion, should they, should they continue to grow and develop, uh, this, this, uh, this project, then there is an opportunity for possibly sale of more land to this company as a, create more jobs.
Oh, sorry, I think, Counselor, I think what you were asking, this is only a land, the city does not own the building. The, the title to the building will revert in thirty-five and a half years, uh, at which time the ci, the building will be thirty years past its useful life. So, uh, we're just selling land, not the building.
Oh, not the building?
Not the building, we don't own the building.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Pesca, uh, the building is being sold to the same company, they are, they are purchasing the building. In fact, uh, Bill Davis from Brookshire Hathaway, uh, is, is a broker realtor on the project. So, there is, the buyer is buying the building and the land. So, the building from a private seller and the land from the city of Roswell.
Thank you. Council Lady Halverson.
Counselor, your mic, please. So, um, you had said that they're gonna grow a hundred jobs every year. Initially, how many jobs are they bringing? Because I know your, your Facebook posts are gonna be three-hundred-and-thirty jobs over the next several years.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Halverson, I, we anticipate, uh, the first year, they're gonna grow by more than a hundred jobs. It's three-hundred-and-thirty over three years, we see a big ramp up the first two years, and then the third year probably the rest of them.
Do you know the average pay for those jobs?
Well, I think the starting, the lowest starting salary is about sixteen, almost seventeen dollars an hour, and, and goes up. They do qualify for making the jobs into the high-wage category by the state, uh, so that'll also provide them some other incentives, should they choose to pursue those.
Thank you.
Are any further comments? Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against, uh, ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two, the sale of real property, the old bus plant? Anyone care to speak for or against it? Anyone care to speak for or against it? Any further councillors? Okay, so, uh, just one thing, Mr. Roper, thank you, we've worked with you before on, on leaders and stuff, and so thank you all very much for, thank you for working with us, and we appreciate the help, it does help. Those funds do help on our economic development, so thank you and the governor and her staff for, for doing that, it's, it's good, thank you. Okay, seeing, if there is no, seeing no further debate, uh, on a motion by Councilor Hildebrand and a second by Council Johnson, the clerk will call the roll, please. This is to advertise for a public hearing to adopt ordinance twenty-four dash zero-four, the sale of real property at Roswell.
Council Marujo?
Yes.
Council Johnson? Council Haldenbrand? Council Oropesa?
Yes.
Council Halverson?
Yes.
Council Chapel?
Yes.
Council Corn?
Yes.
Council Arnold?
Yes.
Council Cavan? Council Moore? Motion passes ten to zero.
By, by a vote of, uh, ten in the affirmative, none against the ordinance twenty-four dash four, for the sale of real property at Roswell to authorize for a public hearing in a, uh, adopt, for proposed, uh, for adopting, uh, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-four, the sale of real property at Roswell, has duly passed the, uh, the council. Okay, now, since someone moved a lot of items back onto the, onto the floor, we did not, we, we took a lot longer than we did at our last meeting. So, I, I really, it's really sad, I, I'm sorry, we, we couldn't have kept everybody moving and, and beating our record, yes. So, in speaking that, we will now finish our, uh, we've already done public participation unless someone else has said anything. We're gonna go now to our city manager, uh, for reports and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, I'll be brief, uh, I'll try and keep us on track and, and get us out of here quickly, uh, and of course, take your questions. Do want to announce that, uh, we recently had a, a fire academy class. Young men and women graduate, uh, with our fabulous fire department, and, and we provide some of the best training in the state, that's my understanding. We are going to have our next open tryout this Saturday at six AM at the Fire Training Center, uh, out there, uh, near church on the move, on the corner there. So, I want to announce that, that's also on our social media pages, uh, with the city. But anybody that is wanting to be a firefighter, that is a great opportunity, and, and again, we'll be, uh, looking for our next class of recruits. So, I wanted to put that out there. Also, uh, want to touch on the insurance cost increase, added our airport recently, uh, a four-fold increase. That's a nasty surprise for anyone. We knew that, uh, the insurance was going to be going up, uh, we didn't quite know it was going to be going up by that amount. And certainly, um, those notices that went out yesterday, uh, were a little rough on the tenants out there. We are going to explore our options, uh, first one being, we need to test the market for insurance rates. Same as you would with your home and auto insurance, every couple of years, you really ought to go out there and look at the rates, uh, because they could vary drastically. So, we're going to test the market on that, uh, through an RFP process, that won't be overnight, that's gonna take a minute. But we've got staff, um, thinking about those things, starting to put those things together. The other thing that we need to do, um, with our, our buildings out there, as you know, these buildings are old. So, uh, the, the motion to hear, uh, the sale of this land, uh, for the old bus plant is exciting for a lot of us. Certainly, uh, many of us, I know Councilmember Johnson, uh, worked out there at Nova Bus, uh, I did as well, um, back when I was eighteen, nineteen years old. It, it's exciting to see that building is gonna be renovated, uh, and, uh, brought up to speed, and it's a perfect building for their operation and what they do, so we're, we're really excited about that. But back into the insurance, um, we've got seventy-year-old facilities out there, uh, buildings that, um, you know, typically have a useful life of about twenty-five years. We need to look at how we are covering those buildings. I, I, just going on, uh, what I've learned, uh, in being your city manager, uh, for the time that I've been here, I don't think that's been looked at, um, for decades, probably. But we need to look at the coverage, are we covering for full cost replacement, or are we covering for demo? Which one makes financial sense, uh, in terms of the age of the building and its true value? And the coverage rates for demo versus, uh, full cover, uh, full replacement costs, uh, are vastly different. So, we need to evaluate those buildings and what we're covering, uh, how we're covering it, and we need to test the market. And I'll thank Bud Kunkel, uh, he and I had a conversation last night, um, it ended well, which was great. But he also reached out to some of his contacts in the insurance business, um, and, and we're going to visit with them as well just to get a cursory, uh, idea of what they might evaluate those buildings at. Of course, it would have to go, uh, through an RFP process, given the procurement and the dollar values involved, um, in the total cost. So, we're looking at those. I do want to, uh, say that, uh, one of the things that we've driven really hard on the staff, uh, with is to perform their duties and get these leases up to snuff, um, get these leases in an inventory where they're being monitored and evaluated. We believe David Skeen, uh, is going to be a, a huge help, uh, with that. I can tell you that, uh, he and the staff out there are already working diligently on removing us from QuickBooks in terms of tracking and, and billing for our leases and getting us over to the city's Tyler system. That, that's a big deal, and, and we need to get that done now. Also, uh, they need to bill and keep up with their leases, so, uh, it's, it's not a blame on them that they've sent out the, the billing statements, uh, this insurance cost is billed out once a year. Really, it's a management, uh, my level, um, thought process on a four-fold increase. I need to be aware of it, uh, and, and, uh, certainly, we need to plan around those things, um, as we move forward. So, uh, the staff is doing what they need to be doing and what they should be doing, and, quite frankly, in, in years past, it's my understanding that some of those bills never even went out. So, we will continue to work that, the staff and the airport manager is actively reaching out for in-person visits with the tenants to let them know what we're up to and how we're trying to mitigate this. Again, it won't be an overnight fix, uh, but we will work it. I've, I've got bad news as well. Our human resources director, Ms. Renee Trujillo, uh, has accepted a new position. It's great news for her and her family, uh, this is essentially a, a promotion up, um, uh, but she will be leaving the city. It's my understanding, she's been with us about seven years, and, uh, in my working with her, she's done a fantastic job. So, uh, while we wish Renee, uh, the very best, and she'll be with us, uh, by the way, until February nineteenth, and she is actively working to help us find her replacement, uh, but that's the bad news. Renee will be moving on, uh, I think it's great news for her and her family and her next chapter and her next adventure, but I do want to make you aware of that. I also wanted to brag on some of our people. I've, I've been meaning to do this for a while, uh, and so I'm glad you gave me the mic, and, and again, I'll try and keep, keep my pace up here and not slow us down too much. Uh, I, I do want to brag on our maintenance department. It's a relatively small department, they handle a lot of things, uh, a lot of work orders. They've been backed up with, uh, over three-hundred work orders for, for quite some time, uh, and they have trimmed that down. Uh, I think the last time we talked to them, it was around two-seventy. So, they are making headway and they are prioritizing, uh, those work orders, which is what we'd ask, and we'd ask that they turn those over in a, in a reasonable amount of time. So, Nathaniel Mascaris, um, replaced Justin Holcomb in that position. I just want to tell you, he's been lights-out fantastic, he's been all over the city, uh, and, um, we brought him over from, uh, here, our civic center, um, and, uh, he has a, uh, GB ninety-eight contractor's licenses, was brought up in the business, and so he's a wealth of knowledge, and I tell you what, he's a go-getter. So, one of the first things I've asked him to do is let's get the, the work orders caught up and under control. Let's put together a preventative maintenance program, the city has not had a preventive maintenance program of any sort that I can tell. And I, we need that in particular on all these roofs, uh, on city-owned property around town. Typically, they're the flat roof TPO systems, uh, we know we've got pigeon problems, we know that the, the things that the pigeons leave behind eat through those TPO roofing systems if you don't clean them off on a regular basis, preventative maintenance. Mr. Matthews has, uh, uh, brought his, uh, former life fire expertise, uh, to the equation and, uh, acquired one of our old brush trucks, uh, to help in that cleaning process, and in my understanding, in talking to Nathaniel and his group, it is working great. So, they're getting up on these roofs, uh, they're building into a red, regular schedule, and they're cleaning this stuff out that clogs up these drains that then creates a lake on the top of our rooftops and leaks into our buildings and kitchens and costs us, uh, lots of money. The other thing that they're looking at, uh, with a particular focus and priority are HVACs, C systems, uh, throughout the city. You may recall from the summer, uh, we had a lot of HVAC system failures, and, uh, trying to work through that during the summer months and get parts and get labor and get things moving is not the way to do it. Uh, we, we need to be ahead of that curve. So, he's already, already gone out and inventoried the age of those systems, uh, putting spare belts, uh, in there, so when our guys are out there, uh, doing their PM checks on those things, those things are available. So, I just want to say, I'm super proud of, of Nathaniel and his team, uh, with our maintenance group, and, and really appreciate what they're doing. In that same vein of appreciation, uh, I want to thank Mr. Jim Burris, uh, Rudy Chavez with Parks, and Randy Perez, our new, uh, relatively new Parks Maintenance Supervisor at Peppermint Park. They've done a fantastic job, and you've probably seen a couple of articles, you probably will see a few more in the summer, uh, because they are gonna have that place, uh, Peppermint Park, looking fantastic, and you're gonna see kids running around out there again. The eight-foot chain-link fence, uh, that looked like a prison yard is gone. The grass and the, uh, sprinkler heads irrigation system, where the sprinkler heads been capped, and we had dead spots all over, have been replaced and fixed and are operational. So, the facilities irrigation system, uh, basic things like a lawn mowing schedule, uh, have been implemented and are working well. They are fertilizing and, and all of the things that you would expect, removing the dead trees from around the pond. Of course, the overgrowth has been removed twice now by Parks Department. They have replaced the train tracks that they said, uh, that we were told originally couldn't be found, couldn't be replaced, um, those have been replaced. Mike, Mister, uh, Mister Matthews, Mister Itama, uh, Jim and I, uh, were able to take a ride on that train, and it was like going back in time. and it was like going back in time, and all smiles like little kids. So they got the train running again. Again, we were told the train would need motor replacements and all kinds of things. They replaced some spark plugs and put in a carburetor kit, and it's working just great. So, next on the agenda is the well. The well seized up. Former administration tapped into the potable water that runs along Atkinson. That was a no-go right out the gate, so we cut that off as soon as I walked in the door and said, "Let's fix the well. Let's get a plan to fix the well." I think we're coming in around between fifteen and eighteen thousand dollars to fix the well. It has been plumbed. The next step is to place the variable-speed motor on top of it, pump it, test it, test our pond for nitrates, get game and fish out there. They will stock the pond for free now that the city is no longer charging a fee. We would like to open those gates that open up to the end of the bike trail this summer during the open hours, which would be daylight hours from dusk to dawn, as used to be in place. And we'd certainly like to see young children and their families out there at events such as the, the music.
It escapes me.
Symphony, Roswell Symphony, those types of things, come back out there. That ought to be, you know, that's the historic Spring River corridor. We've got a bike trail that goes there and terminates there. That place ought to be gorgeous. We have found some old photographs of the old Peppermint Park sign, which would take you back in time, and we're looking at some things there, too, that don't cost an arm and a leg to do. So really want to thank Jim and his team, the gentlemen, and I can't thank them all, but gentlemen from Parks have been knocking it out of the park, literally, for a long time for this city there. The guys you see out there early in the morning, going up and down Main Street, getting it all cleaned up, making our town look beautiful, and really have a sense of pride in Roswell. And I think, you know, that's what we're all striving for, to work together and to bring back a sense of pride to Roswell and New Mexico. It's a great place to live. It's a great place to raise kids, and we ought to be proud of it. And the Parks exemplify that, so I just want to thank them. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of our city manager? It was almost a long enough filibuster to get us to where we're not gonna make it under three hours. Mister Cabin? Okay. Can you just wait just a minute? We've got something scheduled. Now, you know, we have to always think, I'm gonna tell you, Mister Burris does everything that he's asked of for our city. We certainly appreciate it. We thank all our employees. Thank you all for being here. Mister Burris, would you just come up, please? And I was gonna see, you know, Mister Burris, I told him what today was, how special today is. And so, being today, by executive order, I have appointed him our official city song person. And we were hoping that you would, and if you noticed how well he dressed, he's got his bright red shirt on, he's got his red shoes on. Would you, and as we, would we all stand, and then as soon as we're through with this, we will be, we will close, would you please lead us in a song of happy birthday to our esteemed Ms. Davies? Much better without your coat on and the red.
Thank you, thank you. Everybody ready?
Okay. We can do that. You ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jamie. Happy birthday to you.
The I had her scared. I gave her another song we were gonna sing today, but I didn't follow through with that one. Thank you. Thank you. I move, we adjourn. Thank you all very much. We're out of here.